It is 6:00. We will go ahead and start the meeting of the June 15, 2023 Plan and Zoning Commission. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision plots, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the City Clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the June 1, 2023, meeting?
I'll move.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And pass. Thank you. And I will read the consent agenda items. Request from Mallory Wood and Tyler Fritz for review of a public hearing site plan for a Type II design alternative for property located at 5101 Valdez Drive to allow construction of a second driveway leading to a new detached garage where only one driveway is allowed. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this item heard tonight in the public hearing? Yes? Okay. We will take that off the consent agenda, and we will hear that item. There is also a request to move item number three to consent. That is a request from Timeless Restorations, represented by Rick Stickell, for the following regarding portions of four parcels located at 2142 East Market Street, A and B. Is there anyone -- B would be rezoned portions of four parcels from I-1 to I-2. Is there anyone here who would like to hear that item on public hearing tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone in the commission who would like to hear that item on public hearing? Carol? Okay. So, we will leave that on public hearing, so we have no consent agenda items tonight. Item number four, there is a request for continuance, as laid out in the staff report. That is a request from Sing Development LLC for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property located at 5901 Floor Drive for a denied Type I design alternative to allow retention of a drive access from a primary street when drive accesses are required to be situated off of alleys or non-primary streets. Is there anyone who would like to hear this item tonight? Anyone on the commission? Okay. Can I get a motion to continue item number four?
I'll move.
Thank you, Emily. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. On the public hearing tonight, item number one. Request from Mallory Wood and Tyler Fritz for review of public hearing site plan for a Type II design alternative. Kyle from City Staff will present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Kyle Larson, City Planning Staff. The applicant is proposing a second driveway in order to access a proposed detached garage at 5101 Valdez. Here is the notice map that shows the subject property there outlined in yellow. This property is located on the northwest side of Des Moines in the Beaverdale neighborhood, just off of 51st and Valdez. These are some -- sorry about that, Carol. These are some site photos that were taken this afternoon. This is looking north on 51st Street. The subject property is that two-story home just on the left side of the roadway. This is a view looking west on Valdez Drive. See the subject property just to the right. And this is a view looking south on 51st Street. You can't really see it very well, but the subject property is just kind of hidden in the shade under this tree here. There's a front view of the subject property. As you can see, it's a corner lot. They have an existing attached garage and driveway off of Valdez Drive here. In this view, you can see the corner lot, and then the location of the proposed driveway would be cutting through this existing six-foot-tall privacy fence to get into their rear yard. Another view of approximate location of that proposed drive approach and driveway would be kind of in the middle here of this existing fence. Here's a site sketch provided by the applicant, gives you a little bit better understanding of how the proposed driveway would be oriented and then accessing that proposed garage. I do want to mention that the building permit for the garage is on hold until the commission makes a decision on the Type II design alternative on whether or not to allow that second driveway. Neighborhood districts, by and large, only one driveway is allowed per lot. There is, in the staff report, there really is no reference to the garage itself. I just wanted to point out that the garage itself is compliant with all of the building code and planning and design code requirements for detached garage. So, just wanted to point out that the only relief that the applicant is needing is for the driveway itself. Here are the garage plans that have been submitted. Just wanted to provide these to provide some context on the building itself, even though that is not really subject to the discussion about the design alternative for the driveway. I did want to point out that it is a slightly larger-than-standard garage. However, the property itself is larger than a standard lot because it is a corner lot. It does have about 13,000 square feet of total lot area. The size of the garage is really based on the rear yard area, and so that is why it is code-compliant to have a slightly larger-than-standard garage at this location. Moving on to the staff report. Just wanted to point out that staff is recommending approval. Some of the rationale behind our recommendation of approval for that second driveway is 51st Street is just a local neighborhood street. There is not a lot of traffic that's carried on this local street. There is, my understanding, there's a bus stop at the corner. However, if this were on, say, a neighborhood collector or a more heavily-traveled street, we may have a different opinion, but adding the driveway at this location, we didn't feel from a staff perspective it would have that big of an impact on just this neighborhood pocket here. We did receive a letter of opposition from the neighbor to the north. This is the letter that submitted from David Grossland, the neighbor immediately to the north, 4310 51st Street. He is in attendance tonight, so he will likely be speaking here after me. But obviously, I did want to share his letter within my presentation here and just point out a couple of his areas of concern. He does have concern about the length of the building and the kind of view shed blockage that he will have from the rear of his property to the south, as well as some of the obstruction of airflow into his property. Looks like his second objective is concerns about the driveway approach itself taking away some of the on-street parking along the west side of 51st Street that is allowed on-street parking. Third is potential impacts to utilities, some of the utility lines that are below-ground and above-ground, how that would be affected by the construction in this proposed building. His fourth point is the possibility of a negative value reduction in value for his property and some of his personal objection to the construction of that garage. And then I believe his fifth point here is just the garage's, the size of it is out of context and character for the neighborhood. But as I mentioned, from a review standpoint, the structure itself is compliant in terms of size and location. It's meeting all the setbacks, setback requirements for a detached garage. And then lastly, he presented a couple of photos from the rear of his property, looking onto the subject property, so you can kind of get a little bit of perspective from his point of view in terms of what that would look like potentially with a structure erected there. And again, that would be beyond that six-foot privacy fence. This is the consent map that we provide for each item. You can see Mr. Grossland's property highlighted in red there to give you some context on where he is situated in comparison to the subject property in yellow. That concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions before I turn it over to the applicant.
Commissioners? Yes, Chris?
Can I ask one? So, is the other, is the driveway that's currently there going to be taken away, or will that remain? There will be two driveways at the end as well?
Everything that is existing from Valdez that I showed in that photo would remain.
So, there will be two garages, two functional garages?
Correct. An attached garage and a detached garage. There would be two drive approaches and two driveways.
Kyle, could you go to slide nine? And I think maybe you got glossed over. There are a couple of mature trees, and that was also that part of our thought as staff, that the garage, as Kyle noted, could be built by right. And another solution would have been to extend that driveway, and that wouldn't require review, but we did note that they had a couple of mature trees as well. So, that was also part of our thinking.
And those trees can be seen from some of these photos, too. You can see they're mature trees here in the rear yard that provide tree canopy.
So, Kyle, there is a privacy fence to the north of the property. It's not a chain-link fence that connects the adjacent two properties. Is that correct?
That's correct. I believe there is a chain-link fence running along the west side of the rear yard here. But on the north side, you're correct, Will, that there is a six-foot privacy fence, and then you can see the six-foot privacy fence extending along the street side yard as well. Are there any other questions?
Okay, just one. You said that the proposed garage was as of right, including the size?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. There are no other questions. Thank you, Kyle. The applicant now has 10 minutes to present. It's the applicant here today. It's the applicant for item number one here. Mallory Wood or Tyler Fritz?
Yes.
No?
Your time.
Yes? Okay. You have 10 minutes to present.
Right here?
Yes. If you could state your name and address?
My name's Tyler Fritz. Live at 5101 Valdez Drive. Trying to get a second driveway. Reasoning, my main reason for driveway on the side versus around where I currently have a driveway is two big trees. I have two very large, they're oak trees, or no, sorry, maple. And I don't want to take them out. They would be in the way of driveway, going around for a garage. Trees are good. They're big, well-established trees. They provide lots of shade for my surrounding neighbors, myself, and that's the main reason. And honestly, the drive on the other side works a little bit better for me. Some things that I've looked at, bus stop down the corner, another drive there doesn't really impede with any of that. The other drive wouldn't be directly across from neighbor's driveway either. It's just a decent-sized corner lot, and the side driveway would be very beneficial to me. That's all I got.
Are there any questions from commissioners?
What are you, what are you going to put in that really big garage?
I am a car guy. I have lots of vehicles, mainly storage. We've had, my girlfriend's brand-new car went through a hailstorm. We've got vehicles I don't like sitting outside, and basically that.
So, cars?
Yes. Yep.
Am I right in, maybe, this is a question for staff. You can build the garage no matter what. You don't need relief for that. And you could, like, keep going straight and have the garage go the other way. It's just that there's trees in the way. So, you could do it that way. You just don't want to take down the trees. Okay.
What's the height of the garage?
14-foot walls.
Okay. And then the roof is pretty over that?
I forget what that is exactly.
Any further questions from commissioners? Okay. All right. If you can sign in on that white sheet, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in support of this request this evening? Okay. Seeing none. Next, we'll ask any speakers in opposition. You may come forward, one at a time. You have five minutes to present. Please state your name and address before you start.
My name is David Grossland. Only one S, which keeps it from being gross. But arguably.
Sorry. Can you step a little closer to the mic so that we can hear you? The microphone is right there. Yes.
All right. You have in your computers my filing of an objection, because it would take much longer to read than my five minutes allows. And so, I will only review a couple of those things in process and in overview. I would appreciate it if you would read this carefully. It does refer to possible violations of the addendum two of the exceptions. There are a number of them of varying degrees of seriousness, but I would appreciate it if you could take the time to look at those. Is it possible to get a, put this on the screen?
Yes. Is it on?
Up or down faced? Ah, there we go. Okay. Just one quick, quick reference on this. The yellow is my property. This is the property at 5101 Valdez. You'll notice that this is shorter than the garage and drive. The photograph that I put with the agenda, in fact, that Kyle showed you, shows the view from my kitchen window. We fell in love with it, my wife and I. She passed, unfortunately, a lot. But that view was from the kitchen window. The one on the bottom is from the patio beside the back of the house. Now, it's hard to see up here, but in this, this street is part of the view, 51st and Aurora, two blocks away, but it provides the ability to see, see things. We fell in love with it 35 years ago, and we kept it. The peak of that garage that's being proposed is 17 feet high. That's well over twice the height of the security fence. And will totally block this. This is 59 feet, 58.95 feet, okay? Combination of the drive and the garage is 70 feet. So, it wipes out that view primarily. All of the drive is shorter. I know they're supposedly separate, but these are intrinsically involved, I would suggest. In any case, let me quickly get through other points. Okay. I feel it's misleading because it shows information, you know, the proposal that was relevant only to Valdez and not to Merced. And I just mentioned the facts, the figures on the lengths and so forth. The impact is total, blocks off air. When the leaves blow, they blow toward my yard. They don't blow that way. 17-foot fence is pretty high. And when we bought the house, a major factor was, okay, it's not a big lot, but look at that view. And what we were told by the realtors and everyone else was, and then we asked, you know, can that, we lose that, what happens? No, the code protects you. The code would prohibit it from blocking your view. An exception would relieve that or release that. We also have a couple of concerns about the utilities provision because the utilities--
I'm sorry, the five minutes is up, but we do have your letter.
You do have my letter.
Yep.
And I appreciate your consideration of it, because I do feel it has. You want me to sign that?
Yes, please. Thank you very much.
I already signed that.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in opposition? You may come forward.
I live at 4315 51st Street, kitty-corner to the property. First, I'm concerned what's going to happen in this oversized shop, whether it's going to be, become a business, Air Tools. This is a neighborhood. It's, it's extreme for 14-foot sidewalls. He's going to be putting in hoist everything else in the building, Air Tools, nights, weekends, noise, et cetera. How is that going to affect my property? He may swear, I'm not going to be commercial, but if he's a car guy, normally, they buy and sell cars all the time. One thing on the first presentation, he was talking about traffic on the street. There are apartments on Twana Drive, and they're on 51st Street and, I don't know what it is, 54th Street. There's three, four, five times the traffic than there is on Valdez or Merced coming out of the apartments. So, that his notion that it's just neighborhood traffic, there's more traffic on our street than it is the east and west streets. Another concern of mine is flooding. The city down right by Aurora bought a house a few years ago because of flooding. How is that water going to, it's not going to be able to soak into the lawn there from that building. That's a lot of property that's going to be concrete. Where's the water going to go? City already had to buy, buy out a house that, just down the block, three houses down, that you guys own the property because of flooding a couple of years ago. That should be a concern. Where is that water going to go? This gentleman, they bought the house, they haven't been there three years yet. If they would have bought a property north of Meredith in the unincorporated area, they could build a shed and do what they wanted to there. Was this in the back of their mind when they bought the property? If so, why did they buy it? If they knew they had to go through, get approval and all this? And there's plenty of storage units within about two miles for many vehicles that they would, I bet, if he penciled out, it'd be cheaper to rent some storage unit than to spend lots of money on this shed. And the home to the south of us was just purchased by a Burmese family, and they have three kids under 10 years old. And communication is a problem, and the driveway is going to be basically right in their front yard. And they aren't, they haven't moved in yet, but it could be an issue with them, especially in the communication side of it. And one last thing. Most people, I come from a small town. Most people, if they're going to try and do something like this, propose something like that, they go knock on the neighbor's door. The first thing I knew about this was the notice in the mail. So, that's all I'm saying. I don't want a car dealer kitty-corner across from my, and once he gets the shed built, what's there to stop him? Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for signing in on the white sheet. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in opposition to this item? Okay. The applicant has five minutes for rebuttal, if you'd like to come forward.
I guess just a couple of things. Driveway, for what I want and what I'm doing, it's also not a very active driveway. We park in the front of the house, park in the front driveway. Again, it's more of a shelter thing than anything. I don't plan on becoming a car dealer. I do own lots of cars. They are mine. I do work on them, but also could be doing that in my garage right now, and there's not a lot of tools, throw it all hours of the night. And I respect all the kids. There's kids everywhere in our neighborhood. I have a 10-month-old at home myself. And I don't want to impede on anybody else either. But again, my biggest thing, I was granted the stuff for the garage. I just don't want to take out those big trees. Cost aside, they're well-established, good trees. Previous owner built a nice treehouse in there, in one of them. And they're right in that left side, west side, north corner. I mean, provides lots of shade for the houses around me as well. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Open it up to the commission for questions, discussion, motions.
I have a procedural question, please. The fellow that gave the second--
The fellow that gave the second opposition speech said he lived diagonally from the property. And when we looked at the, yeah, when we, so I assume that he's sometime here down, I don't know.
He said forty-three fifteen.
Yeah, so it's the Josten, Josten.
Yeah, okay. My procedural question is this. I assume, and he's not, he's kind of walked out, but I assume he received a card that he could have objected. But if he did not return the card and has come here and objected at the public meeting, is that the same thing in terms of account?
Right. We only do the cards for rezonings. We do, we just send a notice. And so I think you can consider his verbal testimony, the equivalent of the gentleman that's still here is written and verbal. So I would say that, you know, in your mind, I mean, we don't have like a number threshold, there's no like supermajority requirement or anything, this is just for you to understand neighbor perspective, but in your mind, I think you can look at that map and see two red squares.
I also sort of have a question for staff, I guess. Usually on type-two design alternatives, we hear about the, I think it's two-hundred-and-fifty radius of whether or not it is in line with the character of the neighborhood. Is that something that came into this or not? Like, say when we, when somebody wants a type-two waiver to waive putting in a garage, then it's often looked at, you know, a radius around that property to see how many properties don't have garages. So is that something that would also come into play for this property?
In general, we did look at the character of the housing stock in the neighborhood. That's kind of typical of any review that we do similar to this. It is kind of a mix. It is house type B, so it is a mix of houses with attached garages and houses with detached garages. The only thing that really stood out was the difference in size of this garage. It's twenty-four by forty-six. I think the next largest garage that I saw was like twenty-four by twenty-eight within a, you know, kind of this general radius that you see on the screen here. So it's not out of character to have a detached garage in the rear yard, it's just this one, the size of it was a little bit larger than standard. But again, based on the lot area that he has and the size of his rear yard area, that's what defines what the applicant is allowed to have in terms of a threshold of size of detached garage, which he is meeting.
And I'd piggyback on that, I also believe that a few houses to the north, there's a property with a circle drive, so it had two curb cuts, so we also looked at that as well, as looking for other examples of multiple curb cuts.
Correct.
But I assume that there, I mean, obviously, we're just considering the driveway and not the garage, but I assume this would be the only property in this neighborhood with two garages.
I believe you're correct.
But there's nothing we can do about that. Like, right, is that, am I right in thinking that? They can build it no matter what.
That's correct.
It's just this, where they want the driveway.
The second driveway is what is triggering the type-two design alternative that you're considering tonight.
What about this compromise? You're looking at a five-foot setback? What if you made it more than five foot and it gave the custom, the resident to the north some breathing room, and you moved everything closer to the house?
I might let the applicant speak on that, but just if you look at the drawing here, that dashed line that they're showing, that is representative of that minimum five-foot setback. So you can see in proximity to that minimum five-foot square, five-foot setback, where the current proposal has that garage cited.
Right. But in a, in a gesture of good neighborliness, rather than having the garage sort of in the face of the neighbor, perhaps giving it a little bit of space, then it relieves some of that.
It would be compliant if it was moved south and west to locate it. That would be compliant by code. I may, may let the applicant speak on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd want to hear that, you know, impacts to the application. I mean, the commission can certainly apply conditions based off of a way to mitigate the impact of the driveway, because remember, we're talking about the driveway. And I think we had talked about having a condition of, you know, making sure that the driveway set in, like it's shown on this drawing, isn't expanded to minimize the width and the impact of the driveway itself. But, I mean, it is within the commission's purview to ask for some adjustments, as long as there's an nexus of the, to the request.
If we're talking about look angles, isn't the, the window which appears to be in about the center-west portion of the house to the north would probably be approx, if it's a fifty-eight-foot wide lot, looks like it's probably going to be about thirty-five foot from the actual edge of that lot. Well, and it's the actual obstruction isn't necess, to that street, doesn't actually look like it's as significant as claimed. Is it? Because the driveway is twenty-five foot, so I'm only looking at twenty-five foot of actual, has anyone actually even assessed whether or not these claims of obstruction are even accurate?
Yeah, I believe his, the house to the north is setback around, just quick measuring on GIS, maybe about twenty feet. So, so if the house is already set, setback, but the lot depth is about fifty-seven, fifty feet.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where the window is citing in the pictures I'm looking at. I'm probably looking at, what, thirty to forty foot from the actual northeast corner of that bottom lot, which I'm just not entirely sure I'm understanding if the claim of obstruction is accurate.
I understand what you're saying. From my estimation, it, I believe that that east facade of the garage is going to be fairly close to the center point of this house. And there's a privacy fence here that kind of represents where that could be. And so the, I believe the east facade wall of the garage would be about where the cursor is right now, Chris. Does that kind of get into your point?
Excuse me, isn't it possible to move it back to the property line between forty-three ten and fifty-one oh eight, and that would eliminate the obstruction to the view?
You're suggesting shifting the
To the
proposed garage?
West? Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we should ask the applicant about impacts to his proposal of shifting it around.
Thank you.
I guess I have
That's okay.
I have a more fundamental question, though, is like, I mean, how much of an obstruction that has yet to be proven, are we going to be requiring added cost and reduced access to yard off of a claim that, you know, I mean, we've also heard claims that he's going to open up a car dealership, and he's a car guy that will be working at four in the morning, even though he's got an actual job. Which claims do we actually want to authen, you know, authenticate ourselves or believe without authentication? That part I find curious.
I agree with you, Chris. I'm inclined to just move staff. He already has a right to build the garage where it is right now. It's just that the drive, we're just debating the driveway.
And I, I do think that those connections for that drive after going through the process of trying to build this, I think the building had, was asked to be moved further west. There wasn't an exact set number on that, but I know when we were talking driveway from the other side, the building was set further west, I believe, than what those other measurements show of the twenty-five feet.
You agreeable to moving it west further, about, it's me. Are you agreeable to moving it west at twenty-five feet?
That, yes, that twenty-five feet was the very initial thing, and they, whoever it was, wanted the building behind the house a little bit more. So that, again, I don't know the exact numbers, but I think in all this, the building has been moved further west a little bit. I don't remember exactly what the numbers were.
Yeah, thank you.
If we go further west, twenty-five feet, don't we take out the tree? That doesn't seem like the math adds up.
The current drive on those pictures was labeled as twenty-five feet, saying that it's not getting moved to twenty-five, that initial twenty-five is going to be more like thirty to the building.
Oh, so you're already now, you're already addressing the obstruction issue. So now, like, there's almost no obstruction issue unless there's some other argument. I mean, you're now looking at thirty foot. I mean, you may even have a clear view of that driveway, that road he's asking about, don't we? Or my misunderstanding, the math here, or I guess it's geometry, sorry.
I do believe that if it were moved five feet west, it would greatly improve the concern that the neighbor has from a viewshed standpoint. But again, the driveway is the type-two design alternative.
I'm, I'm struggling, and I realize we don't have, the garage isn't part of this, but I'm struggling with the mass of the proposed garage compared to the house. What's the height of the house? Is this going to, is this the same height? Not quite.
Should be, should be half a story shorter.
Yeah, so I know there was some discussion about seventeen feet being the limit for the peak height of the roof on a detached garage. That is for a single-story home. Since the applicant has a two-story home, the code requirement is that the peak height of the roof of the detached garage be no, no more than a half-story less than the primary structure. So with this being a two-story home, the applicant did verify that, indeed, that the garage peak would be half a story less than what you're seeing there, which equates to approximately five feet less than that peak height.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay. Any discussion or motions?
I'm going to move staff based on what I said previously.
Okay. This motion on the floor, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed?
Motion carries.
Moving on to item number two, city initiated request for an evaluative report and recommendation on the merit and feasibility of expanding and continuing the downtown self-supported municipal improvement district for an additional ten years. Mike Ludwig is here to present.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Michael Ludwig, Deputy Director of Development Services for the city. Just really quickly, again, this is a proposed expansion, small expansion, and then continuation of the existing downtown SMID. This is initiated by property owners, the board members of the SMID are property owners in the district. They have petitioned the city to renew or extend the timeline of the SMID. And so that comes to the city, and then we're, we're required to process that for, because it's a taxation district. So the initiation really is council receiving their petition and referring it to you for a, for a recommendation on the validity of that petition. State code is pretty specific on what needs to be contained in a petition. When this was prepared initially, again, it, it's a, it's an owner-initiated taxation district, and it was first approved in nineteen ninety-eight. We've had subsequent petitions for extensions since then. This is the eighth extension of that. Early on, it was for about three-year periods, was when they originally adopted this SMID district. The most recent approval was in twenty eighteen, so it's been a five-year period. They're now proposing a ten-year period for this, this extent, continuation. Commercial and industrial properties are taxed in the SMID district. Residential properties are not taxed in the SMID district, except for multi-residential three-plus classified properties. That is all a determination that's made by the county assessor and the county auditor, not the city staff. So frequently what ends up happening is we send out a notice, we're required to by state code, it goes to every property owner within the proposed boundary. And typically what happens is, I get calls, have, for the last five times we renewed this, I get calls after those notices go out prior to the council hearing, and people want to know if they're subject to the tax or not. And most of the calls are coming from condominium owners in the downtown that are wondering whether they pay the tax, which they do not. So most of those calls, and fine, they're, they're fine with not paying the tax, but they love the services that are provided by the SMID. So they have a twenty-five-year track record in this SMID district of providing valuable and desirable services for the downtown. This is what funds the maintenance of all the planters in the downtown area, the raised planters. This funds the clean, safe, beautiful in the downtown, so all the garbage pickup. They also have the ambassador program downtown in the Skywalk, and have participated in numerous things to better the downtown, including helping to fund nightlife studies for the downtown when we've had issues on Court Avenue, to try and address problem areas that have occurred, and noise and, and other things. So it's been a very valuable extra tool that's been available in the city. It goes above and beyond the basic services that the city provides, and this is driven by the owners in the, in the area specifically asking to be, and agreeing to be taxed additional, taxes for those services. Summary of the proposed changes this time around, the boundary has been expanded a little bit on the north up to two thirty-five. I'll show you a couple of maps that demonstrates that. They are proposing to increase the maximum levy that's allowed in the district from two dollars to two twenty-five per thousand. It's been two dollars since its inception in nineteen ninety-eight. They've never hit that threshold, that maximum threshold. And the actual levy that gets assigned is, is determined by council each year. The SMID board submits a budget, they approve a budget and submit it to the city in basically November or December every year. And then the council considers that budget as part of their overall city budget when we set tax levies. Right now, I believe they're at a dollar thirty per thousand is what the current levy is, but they still have the ability currently to go up to two, and they're asking for that increase to go up to two twenty-five maximum. I think that's really based on the fact that they're extending this for a ten-year period instead of the normal three to five. And they are also trying to count for inflation. All of our costs are going up for maintenance. If you look at all of our SMID districts, the maintenance budgets for those plantings and that are going up every year. And so they're, they're trying to accommodate for that potential, as well as the demand for additional services. Have numerous petitions, I have a box that's filled with all the petitions that have been signed, and numerous property owners wrote in additional services that they would like provided by the SMID district on, on their petitions. Whether or not they can actually provide those, those services depends on their annual budget and, and what their maximum levy can be. And again, that is set annually, so it's, it's not, you know, one, one-time shot for, for a review of that. A lot of our other SMIDs have auto, automatic renewals at the end of their five-year periods that can be done by a, a resolution of the council. The downtown SMID has never had that provision in there, or it's, so every five years, they've come back and gone back to all the property owners and have sought petitions, sought approval from the owners in the district to renew the district. There've been adjustments to boundaries almost every time as we have redeveloped different areas of the downtown, and there's actually services needed in new areas, and obviously new tax base to, to help support those services. It is a minimum ten-month process to take care of the downtown SMID. That does not include the time that they have to go out and talk to property owners and get property owners to sign petitions. Some of the collection of those signatures occurs in that ten-month period, the very beginning of it, but their efforts on this start way ahead of that with communication with owners, trying to gain support for, for their effort. The ten-month process is really mostly dictated by state code. The amount of time that is required for coming to P and Z, council has to send out a, a notice of their public hearing, they have to schedule the hearing and send out notice. Then, once they hold their public hearing, they have to wait thirty days to hold first consideration of an ordinance to approve it, and then there's three readings. So it's a very lengthy process, and we have to have it completed by October one of this year to comply with the county auditor's requirements for the SMID to be effective next next July 1. I do want to point out, one of the most significant costs of this whole process is a certified mailing that's required by state code. It has been mailed certified mail to all owners of property within the boundary. Currently, it costs about $6.48 per certified notice to mail to every property owner. So this is nearly a $10,000 cost every time they come in to renew the SMID and extend it. There's automatically that, that extensive cost for notification, and so the ability to extend this for 10 years is very beneficial for them from a cost standpoint. On the boundary, this is the proposed boundary for the SMID, as you'll see on the, on the next map, this is the existing map. So the real changes have occurred up in this portion where I've said the boundary's been extended up to 235. There's a parcel on the east side of Keough Way that has been extended up to 235. There's an area right here that has been extended up to 235 and one parcel on the west side of East 6 or Penn up to 235. Those are the only changes to the boundary. And so again, modification of the boundary, increase the maximum levy allowable to 2.25, and then basically determine going from five years to 10 years are the, are the changes. So like I say, there's, state code governs all of this. It details what has, what has to be in a petition. It does not say what the maximum levy can be. That's, that's, that's set by the jurisdiction and the ultimate approval and ultimately in the petition that's presented to us. It just says they have to state what that maximum rate is, and they have in this petition. Again, it has to have a name, this has a name, has to have a boundary, has to have a legal description, has to have a maximum rate for the levy. All of those things are addressed in the evaluative report which staff prepared. We have found that the petition complies with the state code for minimum requirements to be in the petition. And again, our city legal department actually reviewed that petition and the legal description before it was presented to us. We reviewed it, sent it back to them before they went out and even got signatures on it. So I did outline a little bit of the next steps. If you make a recommendation this evening, the council will receive that at their next meeting on the 26th of June, and then they'll set the date of hearing for July 17. They will also direct notice to be published in the paper and those certified mailings to be made to every owner in the district. So those notices should be going out on June 27, and there's a minimum amount of time we have to meet for state code for those notices. So all of this, this timeline is prescribed under the state, state regulation. The first reading of an ordinance wouldn't be until August 21 because they have to wait 30 days, and then again, we have to have it approved by October 1. So we are recommending approval of the evaluative report that was presented to the commission, and we are supportive of the extension of this proposed SMID district. It's very critical to the downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from commissioners? Carol?
There's a paragraph in there that says, talks about TIF, and it's kind of in language that's difficult for my non-lawyer brain to understand. I'm wondering if you can just kind of plain-language that for me, or if it's, is it something like this that because it's in a TIF, we want to make sure that this levy doesn't get swept up into the TIF?
Correct.
That this, okay, so that's, that's the net-net. This is saying this levy is separate from the TIF.
Correct.
Okay, it's like a protected levy.
Yes.
Okay. What if, and I don't know the tax abatement boundaries, but what if there's a property that's in a tax abatement situation, would they be charged this levy?
It's still a protected levy, the SMID levy is.
The SMID levy would still be protected. They would, they would get free, they wouldn't be paying taxes, but they, they would be paying this levy. If, if it's approved for 10 years, and I was struck by how many times you had been approving it previously, are we stuck or can we reopen it within that 10 years? Let's say, I don't know, a pandemic happens and you want to change what the TIF, what the SMID does. Are we stuck with the 10 years or can you open it up?
They would have to, they can submit a new petition. If, say, say there's a new area that develops and they want to expand again, they could come in earlier and, and ask to renew and continue a new boundary.
Okay.
But again, I would guess that when we went through this whole process, they came to us and were asking us, they, they had several boundaries that were under consideration.
Uh huh.
And they thought long and hard about areas that might expand in the next 10 years, and the cost of the services to, to kind of guess that that might happen.
Mm-hmm.
It wasn't worth expanding at this time, so I don't expect that they'll be back in 10 years to do it. And mainly-
Because it looks like it goes into East Village too, right?
Yeah, it already does right now.
Right, so it's sort of downtown and East Village.
Yeah.
It kind of grew that way, okay. And I assume nonprofits don't pay or do they pay?
Nonprofits do not.
That's what-
In fact, exempt property does not pay the-
Okay, that's what the paragraph was there about, like, accepting donations from nonprofits or something like that?
So in the downtown SMID right now, both of the hospitals make payment, payment in lieu of taxes, they make a donation to the SMID.
Okay.
And so this allows, they can, they can accept dollars from other sources as well.
Okay, so that's why, why that was there. I was a little confused why it specifically called out nonprofits, but it's because they don't, they don't pay the levy. Okay. And then we talked a little bit earlier about, it mentions parking a couple of times, and letter F is the management of parking facilities. And you had said that the purposes have remained consistent for, maybe from the beginning.
Yes.
Is, should it, when it comes regard to parking, and what is the management of the parking facilities that the SMID does?
Can't speak to all of their operations, but I guess what I would say is on the, you're correct, that the, the listing of purposes for the SMID has not changed in 25 years on there. It is what's presented from them as their petition. We, the owners have presented this petition to us, so if they believe that there still are needs to address management of parking or solutions of parking in the downtown for, whether it's special events or other things that they host, that's entirely up to them and their board. We, all we are doing is evaluating their petition based on the state code of what are minimum requirements for that, but the actual services that they provide are entirely determined by their board and their owners in the district. We don't, we don't, we don't dictate that. So we may have desire or debate about whether we have enough parking or too much parking in the downtown. That's really not the purview of this, this petition. If they choose to use some of their money to address parking for a special event or whatever, they're entirely able to do that.
Mike, this SMID has been in effect for a long time. I mean, maybe 10 years, maybe-
25.
25 years.
Mm-hmm.
My question has to do with how downtown has changed over 25 years, and it's changed a lot. So how have the improvements moved with the times, as it were? It's much more residential now than when the SMID originated. What has been the dynamic between residential needs and commercial needs? And have, has that dynamic been reflected in how the improvements have been brought forward?
Yeah, I would say absolutely the clean, safe, beautiful component of the SMID is the most critical component of the whole, of their whole effort. The downtown, the ambassadors that go around and clean all of the garbage cans and pick up garbage along the Riverwalk, I mean, that's a change that has happened in 25 years. They took over some of the maintenance responsibilities, you know, in other areas of downtown. Again, as there have been more residential in the downtown added, there've been more complaints about noise and activity on Court Avenue at night, and so they've helped fund those nightlife studies to try and address noise complaints and just hours of operation and things like that. So it's a absolutely critical component to making the downtown livable and desirable, and we're full support of the continuation.
Is, is there a committee or some kind of an organization or authority that acts as a representational sort of body for what the, the whole downtown needs? I mean, I'm interested in how, if the programs just are kind of self, you know, continuing on and on, or if there's a discussion within the SMID itself, some kind of an authority that gives a focus to what they plan to do in terms of improvements?
That's their board, their board of directors that they, that they establish, and it's made up of the owners in the district. So there's a board that meets, they meet monthly, quarterly, they submit a budget every year to the city in November, and our council reviews that budget and approves it. They have an audit done of their operations every year that's submitted to the city as a, it's an operational agreement that they have with the city. They're required to provide an annual audit and document that they followed all of the bidding procedures or contracts that they have for maintenance and for, for replacement of trashcans or benches or whatever planters in the downtown. So again, it's, it's one of the most self-governed opportunities for, for use of tax dollars that's available. It's a special tax that is agreed to by the owners and managed by the owners, but in order to collect that tax, we as the city have to approve that levy on an annual basis. That's what it was going to do.
What is the, what's the legal, I mean, I see that obviously Kirk is still the representative. What is the legal relationship between the SMID and the Greer-Demoine partnership?
So they have a board that is established, and then the board can, can hire a manager or a management agency, and so basically the downtown SMID is that operating agency, or I'm sorry, that, that, it's the, Operation Downtown is a subset of the Downtown Community Alliance. So Amy Lego is the executive director of the Operation Downtown, and her group is what helps manage the SMID for the SMID board.
Well, I thought Operation Downtown legally is the SMID based off the 990. So who is the, what is the, how's the partnership piece work? Because I mean, it gets to Will's point, is there only insights, once we approve this, it's a voluntary tax, but is there any public oversight of this that the city gets, or is it, we're just hoping the partnership provides us enough insight, or how's that work?
As I stated, we're not approving anything tonight. We're making a recommendation. The council will hold a hearing on approving an ordinance to establish the tax, or establish the district for 10 years. Every year, the, the SMID board has to submit their budget of operations for the entire next year to our city council in November or December. And then as part of the council's budget process, they approve that budget or ask any questions they have about it, and oftentimes we have asked questions about it. If, if the city thinks that there needs to be additional dollars spent or should be additional dollars spent on certain maintenance items or things like that, the council can make those comments at that time. The council then, based on that budget, and as part of their city budget, approves the levy for the, for the district every single year. And that's after we've gotten an audit of the previous year, and that's after we have their budget for the next year, and so there is plenty of oversight of what is happening with, with those dollars by the city and, and the, and the board.
I thought slightly to Will's point, I thought how this works is basically they say, here's what our budget is, and then the city either votes yes or no on its share of whatever it wants to put in for it, but then the actual operations of it, those recommendations aren't actually binding at all, are they? Like, there's nothing the city can say, oh, I wish you could spend this amount on X. That's not actually a city binded, it doesn't bind that.
We have representation on the board, so we, we bring up those comments as part of the board meetings, yes.
How many seats you have out of the total number of seats?
I don't recall how many seats we have on that, but it's not a controlling interest on the board, I can tell you that.
Yeah, it's one designation out of, I think it's like 25 people, right?
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm just giving context to Will's comment because I agree with his comment. I think it's something we've had issues, and I remember Meyer years ago also had the same issue with the actual process, where the oversight doesn't really actually as significant as we say. Is that fair?
I, I believe it is. I believe it's very significant, our, our, our level of oversight on it. We have an operational agreement, contractual agreement that passes the dollars to them, and they have reporting requirements back to us, and we make sure that those are followed, and we, we take that audit and it's reviewed by our finance department. And again, the agreements between us are all, you know, reviewed by our legal department and have been for 25 years, so there's plenty of oversight on it.
And they would have every incentive to do what the residents of downtown Des Moines want anyway, right? Like they, like, the planters are beautiful, for example. Everyone loves them, they make the city look great. So my point is, they're doing things in furtherance of a beautiful downtown anyway, and if they weren't, I think we would hear an uproar.
And I think the key to that is the residents, if it's a condo, is not paying the tax. So, you know, they have membership on their board, and the board decides what those dollars, certainly people have input on that, but again, it's, it is somewhat challenging, I think, at times from a budgetary standpoint to do everything people want.
Right.
Especially when people that are wanting it aren't paying the tax. That comes into, that comes into play.
No, but I agree with that.
The other thing to keep in mind too is they have to go back out there and ask all those people to sign new petitions. So it's like, you have to go out there and ask, ask for a vote again. So it's, they have vested interests in performing.
Yes, sir.
Right, but to the point, to Will and Chris's point, if the purpose hasn't changed in 25 years, I think we all agree downtown has, and obviously it's, it's just, we can't do it this year. Maybe in 10 years, we might consider changing the purposes a little bit to reflect what's going on downtown, the livability and the fact that there are a lot more people downtown, 10,000 or whatever it is, because it's silent on that. And I think some, things change over 25 years, and the fact that the purposes of what you're going to use the money for hasn't, I think, is an opportunity.
Yeah. I think, I think the purposes are broad enough that they've covered it for 25 years. That would really be up to the individual owners when they apply in 10 years to renew it, if they want to change the purposes in the petition that they submit. So again, this is a self-initiated, owner-initiated taxing district, special purpose taxing district, and so it's really driven by what the owners are agreeing to sign when they sign that petition.
Mike, I guess in my perspective, the underlying question here is if can, could the council so chose to change some of the agreements to do X, Y, or Z, they could do that on a yearly basis based on the agreements that they have with the?
They, the council can't change the purposes of the petition. They're reviewing basically the budget that's submitted and making sure that it falls within the purposes of, of the SMID district. So the council doesn't have the authority to change the petition or the purposes. If they change it, they go back to the very beginning and start all over with a new, it'd have to be generated by the owners to change that petition.
Is that something that can be amended during the public hearing process?
No.
No?
This is a signed petition at this point.
Okay.
It's, it's signed and is, they have the percentage, minimum percentage required by state code, the petition complies with the state code, they have, as I stated in the evaluative report, 30% of the owners have signed. Those owners represent 71% of the valuation in the district. So in my opinion, I believe the valuation is the more important number in that because we have a large number of owners that don't pay the tax. So to me, the valuation of, of the district is the key number because that is what's generating, that's what's subject to the tax. So 70% is substantial.
You know, I think we all agree that, that Des Moines downtown is one, if not the jewel of the metropolitan area, and clearly everyone is proud of that, and we just go downtown today and, and see it's a beautiful place. I think that if this is not broken, why should we try to fix it? And in that regard, I would move staff recommendation to approve- And in that regard, I would move staff recommendation to approve this report and pass it on to city council.
We're still in the public hearing part of it, but, yeah. But we'll come back to you.
Can I ask one more question about clarifications? You're saying that, so 30% of landowners represent 70% of the value, but you're saying that those other, those other 70% of individuals who represent 30% of value don't actually pay into it? So you have to sign the petition to actually pay the tax? Or does, once the 30 threshold's hit, everyone has to pay it, right?
The state code requires a minimum of 25% of the owners owning at least 25% of the value in the district to have a valid petition. So they have, they have passed the minimum threshold, and, no, it does not apply only to people that sign the petition, it applies to all taxable property, commercial and industrial taxable property in the district.
Gotcha, okay. I, I thought I misheard you on that.
Yeah.
So we're saying 30% have signed it, you're saying that they represent 70%, but all 100% are now subject to that tax? And the board is set by those individuals who are the owners, who are basically, you know, selected by Operation Downtown, which is under the partnerships, you know, under the partnership for its management. So it's down to actually those payers who actually vote on the board, who actually dictate how the actual thing operates. And we're just saying, you know what, you hit the minimums, and so, we're good, here you go, you haven't been outside the bounds, but we don't have a say in what they really do. We're just saying, it's good enough, planters are looking good, everything's fine, everyone's happy, the business owners are happy, they keep signing regardless. The residents really don't have a vote, they got three out of 20 votes anyway, right? So that's, that's the process, just to be clear, right? Is that accurate?
Yeah. Your, your charge tonight is to, is this petition valid under state code, and it is?
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to speak in support of this item? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this item? Anyone neutral? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion and motions.
I have a question. If I own commercial property within the district, can I vote on this?
My preference would be abstaining there, just because you are a member of the SMID and have some type of, you know, petition rules, receive some control over the petition, so.
Thank you.
But if you live downtown, I live downtown. I mean, I'm for it, I'm, you're.
But she's not subject to the tax.
Yeah, that, that.
I'd happily pay the tax, but.
Um, yeah, I guess with that, without the tax, you know, and, you know, the requirement not being a residential, yeah, I think I'd avoid that conflict there, so.
It's not a conflict?
I wouldn't, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead and make your motion.
Thank you for correcting me. I'm, I'm a Sagittarian, and I'm always too, too much like that. But be that as it may, this is, this is something that's not broken, it doesn't need to be fixed, it's something that I think we're all proud of, and so I move staff recommendation.
Okay. There's no further discussion, I will go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? And pass?
Was that, I'm a pass, but it's not abstaining.
And a pass and abstaining.
Okay. Sorry.
And the motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three, a request from Timeless Restorations for the following regarding portions of four parcels located in the vicinity of 2142 East Market Street, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM, and to rezone portions of four parcels from I-1 Industrial District to I-2 Industrial District to allow a staging area for concrete recycling and storage yard. And Shri Oshie from staff will present.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Shri Oshie Chakravarti, planning staff. Item three is a rezoning request for a property in the vicinity of 2142 East Market Street. The applicant is requesting to rezone the area from I-1 Industrial District to I-2 Industrial District in order to allow a concrete recycling business and associated storage area. This is the proposed rezoning boundary. As you can see, it's on East Market Street. This is north of MLK Junior Parkway and slightly east of East 18th Street. It's in a predominantly industrial area. And this is the, this is the parcel that's, that's 20, at 2142 East Market Street. This is, this is not proposed for rezoning, it's currently zoned I-2, so it's not being included in the rezoning area. But the proposed business and the rezoning that we are looking at will include this area in entirety. Currently, there's an, there's a business in operation. The applicant proposes to lease portions of the parcel, as well as this parcel, to allow the recycling business. So this is looking directly to that existing business. This is looking east towards downtown. This is, I'm sorry, this is looking west towards downtown, looking east, and then, this is, you can see up here, this is MLK Junior Parkway, so it's slightly elevated here, and it's fairly within close proximity to the, to the rezoning area. And because it's elevated, as you're driving on the, on the MLK corridor, there's a good view of the, the area that is in question. This is a conceptual sketch that the applicant provided, gives you a general idea of what they're proposing. It's not a site plan, just a sketch. So as you can see here, they're proposing a concrete recycling business that'll include some machinery that, that is proposed to be here, here in the parcel, which is not included in the rezoning boundary. There'll be a paved parking lot, the storage area is going to be roughly here. And so that is kind of a rough concept of what the applicant is proposing. So I'll just point out a few things. This, this area, as I mentioned before, is primarily industrial. Staff does believe that the proposed rezoning is appropriate, given that this area is, has an industrial land use designation, and areas that are designated as industrial are suitable for that, for that kind of use. And so with the industrial designation in place and the adjacent heavy industrial uses, it's a, it's an appropriate location for this kind of a business and the proposed rezoning. However, staff would like to point out that all outdoor storage proposed in the, in the site should comply with supplemental design regulations pertaining to things like setbacks, height, screening, landscaping, and so on. This is particularly important, because as I pointed out before, it's in close proximity to the MLK Junior Parkway, and there's, because of the elevation difference between the site and the corridor, it could be highly visible, and so it's important to make sure that, that the design regulations are followed to make it an appropriate use that's visible from the, from the highly used corridor. Following a rezoning, the applicant will be required to seek a conditional use from the Board of Adjustment, and these are just the criteria outlined that the board considers in order to grant the conditional use. They will also be required to comply with all site plan, site planning requirements pertaining to Chapter 135 of the code. As there is outdoor storage proposed with this particular proposal and the rezoning, there are supplemental use regulations that apply in relation to, to the, the storage distribution and wholesaling use, so they are outlined here. And similarly with accessory outdoor storage, there's, there's regulations that apply. Again, these are all in the code. We have outlined them, summarized them here for the benefit of the commission as well as the applicant, so that they're aware that these, these regulations are going to apply. Site planning standards, and these are the pertinent site planning standards that apply in relation to the outdoor storage. And as you can see, there is specific requirements with setbacks, screening, and that kind of thing. So with that, staff is recommending approval of this rezoning request. There are a couple zoning conditions that we have recommended, that they bring the site into conformance with the, with the design, the site planning design standards. And condition number two is that any adjoining property that is used or developed will also need to comply with condition one, which is to comply with all the site plan and design regulations. And this is primarily because, as you saw in the drawing, there is a parcel associated with the use that is not part of the rezoning, however, that will be part of the entire project. And so when the applicant moves forward with site plan and bringing the site into compliance, it will not just be the, the rezoning area that is under consideration today, but also the parcel adjacent to it, which is at 2142 East Market. So those are the two conditions. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting, which is required as part of the rezoning process. I believe they had a couple attendees, one of them an adjacent landowner, as well as a representative from the Davidson Revocable Trust, and they had some questions and concerns that have been outlined here. But I will let the applicant talk about this, and just be here for a second so you can read through this. And we received one comment card and support, and this is the consent map. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Questions from commissioners for staff? Ms. Chris?
I'm curious on one thing, and I apologize for not knowing enough about concrete, but I guess, concrete reclamation is essentially just crush it all back up, and I got these piles of stuff sitting out there. I mean, I understand 134 363 E4 has issues of, I can't let pollutants leave sight. With the water there, I mean, does that include, like, water quality issues, or is there any access to water quality pollution that's there? Or is there anything that becomes a possible future reclamation issue, or?
Yeah, I believe that, yeah, I think there was a recommendation from our engineering staff to look at some treatment along the Dean Lake, which is immediately north of the site, to ensure that there isn't runoff from the site into the, into the water that's right there. So they will be required to comply with those, those regulations as well pertaining to water quality and so on.
Yeah, and that level of detail would get looked at at the site plan stage. But they, they did make us aware of that in advance during this zoning phase.
Sort of along those same lines, it seems to be a very dusty industrial use, and you mentioned that the road sits above the property. So is there any concern about how that dust would affect vehicles on the road?
I believe that.
Yeah, it's covered in there.
Yeah, it's, it's covered under the supplemental use regulations. They have to provide the, the Neighborhood Services Department that they, they're, they're gonna keep orders and noise and vibration and those kind of things at an acceptable level, they have to.
The other thing for the commission to remember is, this is actually a conditional use. So even though, you know, we're, we're putting the zoning in place, but they still aren't allowed to operate by right. So they have to go and demonstrate to the zoning board adjustment that they meet the conditional use criteria. And at any time, you know, if, if they, after they get approval, if we have issues where they're not meeting this criteria, the enforcement officer can bring them back to the board to be reconsidered. So there's a lot of layers of review for these intensive uses that have the potential to have negative consequences in the surroundings. So that's, and that's part of the reason why we wanted to put all that in the staff report, so you are aware of the kinds of hoops and criteria that will be looked at as it moves forward.
Yeah, and you can see here under the criteria that the board considers, the, some of those are covered under those.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions from commissioners? Okay, Nina, thank you, Shri Oshie. Is the applicant here to present? Yes, you may come forward, state your name and address, and you have 10 minutes.
Thank you for having me. I'm Audrey Higgins, and do you need my home address or the company address?
Okay. I think company address is fine, is at practice.
Okay, the company address is 13293 South 88th Avenue West, Prairie City. And, so, our, we're looking to start a recycled aggregate company there on Market Street. And we wanted to stage the recycle, as well as crush the recycle on site. We'll be accepting concrete from outside sources under strict regulations as far as what we'll accept. So no demolished buildings, only clean material, that kind of thing. We'll be having approximately 20 to 50 trucks come through each day to haul away and haul in concrete. And we'll have the aggregate on site temporarily. We'll make it, we'll sell it. So it will be moving, the concrete will be moving on the site and off the site, hopefully in a short amount of time. We'll have one crusher, two conveyors, a wheel loader, and two or three excavator-type hoes. The crusher height is 13 foot 5 inches, and the conveyor heights are 30 feet at full extension. We'll have a certified truck scale on that, the parcel that's already zoned I-2. And then we will possibly renovate or use the existing building there on the 2142 East Market lot. There'll be approximately four employees, and we'll have, be putting fence around the property and berms along the property as well with trees. We'll be keeping a lot of the existing trees as much as we can, because they are, some of them are approximately 70 foot tall. So we're hoping that will also help with the beautification of the area and keep it from, the line of sight from the MLK. We'll have gates at the entrances and to keep out trespassers, as well as people, we don't want people dumping on the site. So to secure the site, we will have fences and gates.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Yes, Carol? So the requirements are that the outdoor storage can't get higher than six feet, right? Am I reading that correctly? So your pile's not going to get taller than six feet?
The pile probably will be taller when it's being processed, and then we are able to move it with the wheel loader. And the, at the pre-application meeting, they suggested three-sided storage structures with covers on them. So what we could do is, we can move the piles after they're made and put them into these covered storage areas.
Okay. Because it's, I thought I read that there were no, going to be no buildings built, or no?
We're not planning to build a, a building, but there is an existing building on the parcel that's already zoned I-2.
So this storage structure is, is not? So this storage structure is, is not considered a building? It's considered something else?
More like a stall with a, probably like a tart, like a tarp type of thing, like you would see that would cover a dumpster. That kind of, because when you're putting the aggregate into the stalls, you're gonna be using a big, big machine. So you're gonna wanna take the cover back, dump in there, and then put the cover back over, kind of like you would, like a outdoor dumpster.
I know we're not supposed to talk about environmental issues as part of this, but how can this be dustless?
So the crusher has water that you can, you can pump through it to, like, miss the product as it's going through the crusher. And we've been operating it out by our current location, and it's near a highway, and there's not dust. There's more dust coming from the gravel road than there is from the crusher. And that water is what takes care of that.
And where does the water go?
It's at like a mist, so there's not a lot. So most of it's probably going to end up on the actual material, the crushed concrete.
So you're basically, so it's not like you're pouring stuff on, there's a river. It's misting. Usually it's gonna sit within the aggregate. So you're not gonna have, you're not typically, these operations are gonna have streams of water rolling off. And when they say dumpster, it will look more, if I'm, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if I'm understanding correctly, it looks more like those handball courts at grub, for example. So it'll be a three-sided cement thing. It isn't like a dumpster. It's not...
No, not like a dumpster, like a three-sided concrete structure. But I, I know you've all seen the roll-off trucks going down the road with those, kind of a mesh cover that can be removed. That's why I was referencing the, that type of cover. But yes, so that type of storage, and there should not be runoff from the machine at all. And we are proposing later down the road, as we do some clearing and grubbing with just, you know, underbrushing, that kind of thing, possibly putting in a retention basin for any runoff from any site changes.
Any further questions from commissioners? All right. Thank you very much. If you would sign in on that white sheet?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak in support of this item? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this item? Or neutral? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open it up to commission for discussion and motions.
I do want to reinforce my opinion that these types of hyper-local, circular economy, industrial mix types businesses, which in these types of items have a massive ESG benefit in the reduction of carbon costs of concrete, I think are hugely, hugely positive. I would aggressively support this, obviously, with controls that are, that are in place. I know it is, we had a business at one point out of Simpson where we would actually do concrete lines, and we do apply the water correctly. It is amazing how little dust there is in these things. So if operated correctly, the dust, I think, is typically not a problem. But again, that's, they're the operators. I don't know. I just know it's possible. And this business in itself, I think, is the type of thing we want to support in our city and want to provide these industrial opportunities in our city that we haven't always had, especially as close as they are. So I, I would be in favor of a motion of moving staff.
So I just want clarification. Letter F says loose materials shall not be stacked higher than six feet and shall at a minimum be stored in a three-sided covered shelter. And then G, goods, materials, and equipment shall not be stacked higher than the height of the perimeter screening. I mean, she said the conveyor belt was gonna be 30 feet.
But my understanding is those applied, and this is where staff, I guess, my understanding was that's for the storage. It won't be stored higher than six feet, even though it may operate higher than, higher than that amount while it's actually crushing. Am I clear on that, or no?
Yeah, I mean, there is a difference between a storage area and then the operations. So that's, that is correct. We'll look at all this in detail when they actually have, you know, like a site plan that's submitted. Right now, we're just hearing kind of generally what they want to do, but until we actually see a drawing that we can react to, it's kind of hard to really say what aspects of their operation are processing, what's storage, you know, where is it gonna, how tall is it gonna be? So I, I feel comfortable that as long as the applicant is coming into the process with their eyes wide open, which it sounds like they are, that we should be able to get to an end process, or end product.
I agree with the usage. It's very commendable for the city, and I defer to Ms. Chris to make a motion to approve this staff report.
I will, as always, follow Francis's guidance and go with a motion to move staff.
Okay. Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any committee or director's reports? And so I close the meeting. Thank you very much.